City Council meeting for orders. Join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to the last meeting of this council and of of the year twenty twenty two. We'll do a quick review of tonight's agenda and then I'll call for the roll. And Jeff, as we had public comment tonight, have we had anybody submit either online or in person for public comment?
No, we have not.
All right, before that, though, be calling for any changes to the agenda as always. After public comment or the lack thereof, we'll be going to the consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from December fifth. As well as our parks and recreation truck purchase. And a resolution site, we have a public hearing on our master fees and charges update. Under all business, we have our water master plan acceptance. We have no new business tonight. And then other staff updates, we need to certify the results of the November eighth, twenty twenty two general election. And we'll then we'll wrap up this evening with a report from our city manager. And I got to imagine there'll be some word Senator Committee Council reports this evening. With that, Jeff, you call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Pizza.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Excuse.
And Mayor Polian.
Here.
And I will now call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Hearing that, I will move to public comment. And in the public comment did not receive any submissions virtual in person. We'll go ahead and move ahead to our consent agenda. Unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt or consent agenda.
Make a motion to adopt consent.
A second.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Smallwood and a second by Councilor Walker to adopt or consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, I'm just used to doing the thumbs up thumbs down thing, throwing me off of that. All right, moving ahead to resolutions. I will open this public hearing. For Oregon Resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty eight. And what is today, seven oh three. Tyler, with the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have before you some slight changes to the master fee schedule. Most recently, you've adopted some changes to the parks SDCs in September of twenty twenty two and then utility rates just prior to that in July. These are a few straggler changes that we'd like to make right now as well as annual change in the system development charges. Kick us off with some business license conversation. So as you all know, the city of Sandy charges a business license for all businesses within city limits, doing business within city limits. It's been since November of two thousand four, since that fee has been increased. And the building and planning department or development services department staff. Take the charge on that endeavor annually to mail out renewal notices and follow up on past due businesses and et cetera. That has always been done very paper heavily, lots of mailings, Excel spreadsheets, not the most efficient or cost effective process that we have internally right now. And so the staff in that department has spent some time reviewing online modules and comparing our processes to other cities within Clackamas County. And has found an online payment portal option that would streamline the process, help reduce some of the staff time it takes to manage that. As well as provide an online payment capability that we currently don't offer. So there's some end user benefit as well with that. The existing fee right now is forty one dollars plus sort of an escalating scale depending on how many businesses or how many employees the business employs. And we're proposing changing that to essentially an eighty five dollar flat fee, streamlining the whole process. To just one fee for businesses that are within city limits. A slightly reduced fee for any business that's based out of the home, fifty five dollars. Currently also at forty one. And then increasing the fee slightly to hundred and fifteen dollars for any business that is based outside of city limits, but does business inside city limits. An example of that would be like HVAC company that's based out of Gresham that's coming out here to install, you know, heating and cooling equipment. And then residential retail businesses, so easiest thing that comes to mind here is like a manufactured home park. They currently they would pay ten dollars per unit, this would be an eighty five dollar flat fee plus six dollars per unit. And that six dollars is really sort of trying to capture the added costs that the online provider would be charging us for any per unit type rental business. So that's really more of a pass through on that side and just eighty five dollars for the for the actual business license charge that we would be seeing revenue from.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Does that include apartment complexes and such?
Yes. Yep.
And I just want to make sure I'm fully understanding this. So instead of charging ten dollars per rental unit, we're going to charge flat rate and then six dollars a unit.
Yep.
So essentially, are we going to take a cut on that?
So yeah, in the example of like, let's say there's a I'm going to use ten because that's an easy number for me to do mental math with, right? A ten unit apartment complex, we'd currently be getting a hundred dollars from them. Under this new model, we'd be getting a hundred and forty five. Now, if there's a, you know, hundred unit apartment complex, I don't know how many are at Sandy Place Apartments exactly, but using a hundred. You know, there we would be taking a cut. So there is going to be a benefit to some businesses. Some businesses will be charged less under the new plan and some businesses will be charged more under the new plan. So a couple.
From time allocation, that actually starts to make sense to me a little bit, right? Because there's the initial, the application and all that. But as an account, even if it might be a bigger complex, there's just not as much legwork time for the additional units.
There's a lot more follow up with individual small businesses than there are the larger corporations or larger businesses in town. We don't have a renewal issue, generally speaking, with some of the bigger employers because they're just used to it. What we do find, not an issue, but a lot more follow up with home based businesses and the one off, you know, one or two man shops that just either aren't aware of the process. Or have sort of skirted the process a really long time because we don't have the enforcement currently. Strictly because the staff time it takes to follow up with those to get forty one bucks sometimes. Quite frankly, this isn't really a top priority in a department that's maybe understaffed in this specific area. So. A home based business currently pays forty one bucks, they'll be charged fifty five, so they'll see a net difference, a net increase of fourteen dollars. A business that employs five employees currently would pay currently pays seventy one dollars, their new charge would be eighty five, and so they'll see a fourteen dollar increase as well. A business that would employ ten employees, for example, would currently pay a hundred and six. They'll be charged fifty five under the new plans, so they'll have a savings of twenty one dollars. So it's kind of a, you know, a mixed range of who is a winner or loser, so to speak, in this example. But what I can say is that moving towards the sort of more standard eighty five dollar flat rate would generate somewhere in the ballpark of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars more annually in revenue. There's an initial one time cost with this software that's close to ten thousand dollars. And then some minor annual maintenance fees in the future. So we will be generating enough revenue with this new proposal to offset the cost of the initial software implementation and then still being able to pay those added maintenance fees that we don't currently have using an Excel sheet right now, but also is very time consuming.
So I appreciate the desire to make it simple and user friendly and so on. But also the process of looking at it more times than waiting a long time is to make sure we keep up with costs. So how are we doing in terms with this particular proposal to be able to pay for admin that happens for this business license? Are we paying for ourselves?
Yeah, so the business license program itself does generate revenue after it pays the staff time currently to administer the program. However, not a lot, and given that the fee hasn't been changed in eighteen years. The same sort of fifty thousand dollar ish ballpark that we receive annually is not the same fifty thousand dollars now that it once was. So under this, you know, proposal, I think we'll get closer to probably sixty two, sixty three thousand dollars a year. Those are rough numbers, don't, you know, quote me on that explicitly, please, but it would, we'll see an increase in revenue generated. Once this one time, you know, ten thousand dollar each cost for the new implementation of the program is paid for, that's going to be additional revenue every year we'll be paying that.
Tyler, I had a couple questions. So first of all, does this, if somebody has a couple of rental houses in town, is that come under this fee structure? And the second question was, I assume that like the Forest Service and the school district are exempt. Are there other big entities out there that are exempt from this?
Generally speaking, it's just those government agencies. I don't know if we charge this on nonprofits or not, I'd have to double check that. And then as far as the rental business, yes, it should be, if you are renting your property for profit, you should be paying this license. Now, there might be rentals that we don't know about, but there are, there are property owners that do abide by that. You know, finding a way to enforce that is a little more problematic because we don't have a nice apartment or we have an apartment listing, but we don't have a nice. Now, I have a duplex and here's the other side that I'm renting out, sort of system in place right now.
Sure.
Any more questions on business licenses? No? Okay. The next area that we are proposing some changes to would be the water department fees. So we talked about water rates in July and implemented some increases there, but a couple items we didn't talk about. Are the water meter fee that's paid at the time of building permit issuance? And the meter testing fee in the event that you think there's an issue with your meter. The one time fee for installing the water meter has not been updated since two thousand twelve, it's currently set at three hundred and forty dollars. That does not cover the current costs of all the equipment that goes into that, which includes the meter box, the actual meter, the antenna, because we have the automated meter reading system, the antenna to feed the meter reads out so that we can retrieve those electronically.
We're talking about the really cool system we.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. And then about an hour of staff time or so to install that meter. And those current costs are closer to four hundred and seventy five dollars. Staff would be proposing this increase here for four hundred and seventy five dollars and then annually looking at what is the cost for us to purchase those meters and required equipment with that. And then the one hour staff time associated with this, try to keep pace with break even on this cost instead of losing money every time we have a new permit issued.
Does the four seventy five include the installing?
Includes the hour, about an hour of install time, yeah, at the current rate for the average utility worker. And then the meter testing fee is another item that hasn't been touched since November of two thousand four. It's currently set at twenty five dollars, which is nowhere near the actual cost. So this fee is only charged in the event that you think you have a water leak, we come out to your house, we've tested it, there's no water leak. You insist there's a water leak, you insist there's some other problem and we physically remove the meter, send it to a third party, have them perform a test on it. They say, yes, it's working accurately or no, it's not working accurately, send it back to us. If it's working accurately, we reinstall that meter back into the same meter box. If it's not working, we order a new meter, install that new meter.
So they're out of a meter for a few days?
We have a temporary one that we. Yeah, we have a good question. There is a temporary one we can install so they can still have water service at their home. We don't have this come up very often, but we've had two, I think, in the last year. And so it came to our attention that we're not only losing money on this process, but significantly losing money. And there's already a lot of steps before we get to a meter test that we're doing internally to make sure there's not an active water leak or any sort of meter issue. And so staff is proposing here just recouping the actual cost of all the work that goes into taking it out, sending it to the third party, paying the fee to get it tested, bringing it back, reinstalling it. Plus twenty percent so that we can cover our costs.
What is that amount?
It's about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for the actual meter testing. And then add another probably hour on either end, pull it and reinstall it at somewhere between forty and fifty dollars for the utility worker.
Hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars?
Somewhere between, you know, one fifty to three hundred at most.
So if the meter is bad. We still charge the resident?
We have historically not, if there is an actual issue with the meter, we have not charged them for that testing. And I don't foresee us changing that process either because that means either what we were doing beforehand either wasn't technical enough to determine the issue on our end. Or it was just a larger issue that we didn't have the ability to test for, wouldn't have known until it was sent out for testing. So we're not trying to penalize people that have an actual issue, just trying to make sure that we cover our costs for people that, for customers rather, that perceive a problem that we are unable to identify and don't believe or.
So this is a leak within the meter itself?
Could be a leak, it could be.
Down upstream or downstream.
Exactly, it would be either. Or just, you know, we don't have, we haven't had this problem with the new automated meter reads, but in the old meters, you could have something that just didn't read correctly. Like whatever, not a meter technician, but I, in my understanding, either the pressure was too high or too low and that caused a misread, it could go on, you know, forever. And we knew that when we implemented the new meters that we'd have increased accuracy with these ones because they're newer, they're not twenty years old anymore and just better technology. So it could be, you know, a range of issues with the meter itself.
Yeah, Mike told me a little secret, ask for the old meter.
Yeah.
Because it spins slower. Not that you had a choice, but the point being is the old meters wear down.
Yep, absolutely.
So when we put in the new ones, they were faster speed plane.
And those first few months after we installed those new meters, we got lots of phone calls from people who thought they had water leaks and we tested all of those to you know, come to the realization that no, you were just the lucky one that had an old meter that didn't read correctly and it underbilled you for.
Can we request an old meter?
You can request an old meter for a few days while the new ones are being tested out, but otherwise, no, there's no old meters being installed.
It sounds like we're pretty well finished with that particular one. And the only reason why I bring this next subject up is because I think it fits kind of in here. And not that we want to make a decision, but the Backflow Device Program. I've never seen a fee for that. I know it's self managed and all that kind of stuff. How are we doing with that? Is that cover itself?
So under the current system, we do not charge any Backflow Device fee.
There's a charge for the third party to be able to do the job.
Yeah, so the customer will pay their own third party person to come and test it. That test is then, or the results of that test is sent to Public Works Operations Center. We log it to ensure compliance. Anyone that's not complying with an annual test does have, you know, enforcement action. Taken a warning letter, follow up. Ultimately, if you don't do it, your water gets shut off until you do do it.
So just, does it pay for itself? I guess that's a question, just.
No, because there's no revenue coming in for it.
Okay.
That's the, that's the short answer.
It's something maybe to look at as time goes by?
Yeah, if there's interest in directing staff to look at what other agencies charge for just having a Backflow Device, we could absolutely do that and come back at a later date with.
At least look at, make sure it covers itself.
True.
The only thing I would say about that is that you know, with those of us with irrigation systems or trying to be, you know, more conserve water. But you know, we do have more, I think we have higher water bills, you know. This, I know my water bill is much higher than when we had a hose and a sprinkler.
Yeah.
Because, you know, Mike just let it run by. But, you know, so I think you're also, you know, you're getting a lot more money with those that do have irrigation systems than you might otherwise get. So you're kind of covering part of the cost there, but yeah.
And we can easily bring back information when we go into the budget process.
Yep, I got one in my house.
Okay, any more questions on water fees? Nope. Okay, the fun one, system development charges. So as I mentioned earlier, we did update the parks SDCs here in September. The last two or three fiscal years, we've updated water wastewater and transportation SDCs in November. That used to coincide when we did all of our water rate increases. We've since moved to a fiscal year based water wastewater rate increase that we talk about in June, effective with the July billing. These are still stragglers that are on the November timeframe. So I'll start with, you know, that caveat that we can change the timeline at any time, but right now we've just been bringing them annually and so that's what we're doing tonight. The code allows for these changes to be made administratively based on a very prescribed cost index, the nearing news record construction cost index for Seattle. We've used that for a number of years, as long as I've been here, I don't know how long, you know, before that, we used that record or that index, but so we've been using for the November twenty twenty one to November twenty twenty two time period, the increase was eleven point eight percent. It's a hefty increase, but probably no surprise, given that it's based on construction materials and cost of labor and all those things that go into sort of home development and construction costs. And so applying that eleven point eight percent would generate the increases that you see here. The total SDC increase for a single family home would go up by one thousand six hundred and nine dollars effective with this change. It's not a huge difference, difference from what we saw last year. I think that number was closer to about a thousand. It was only a six point two percent increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. So, you know, in in the, in light of our current sort of conditions around development. You know, we are under the moratorium currently, we only have a certain number of EDUs that were, or ERUs that were able to continue to issue permits for until that moratorium is over, which is hopefully as early as spring of twenty twenty three. So there's a couple of implementation options with this one. We could act now with the January first effective date and just capitalize on, you know, this increase for any new permits that are issued. And continue to build those SDC revenue lines, those three utility funds. We could delay until the budget process, build it into the budget and have those go into effect July first. Or even another option would be waiting until the moratorium is over or another timeline the council, you know, might have an interest in. Obviously, delay would result in a reduction in SDC, a loss of revenue there. But we also want to be mindful of the other SDC increases that we just did with parks. And, you know, recognize that there's already some.
I was, I was told that they don't that we should, that we should look at them all separately during that parks debate.
Yes, well, yes, I mean, there's a whole.
There's that you pay them all at once?
We pay them all at once. So, you know, trying to be mindful of the fact that costs have continued to rise on that building permit. You know, I think that continuing current practice and implementing the rate is probably, from a finance perspective, the better option. There's also sort of an ease of implementation if we were to delay until a fiscal year start date and then just get all of the utility rates and the SDCs adopted at the same time. So that's just sort of one message that goes out instead of, hey, July, there's a rate increase, so November, here's another rate increase. So those are the two sort of options that are available this evening with this specific set of fees.
So what exactly with these fees that we're talking about possibly delaying, what would they go towards?
These are the SDC, so system development charges for water wastewater and transportation, transportation is our street fund.
So we may have to delay those, well, we were talking.
Yeah, the option to delay. Past practice has been to implement these, you know, effective and adopt in November. I've used the November index, adopt in December, effective in January. I'm a proponent of continuing past practice until.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not wanting to kick the camera.
I think, especially in light of, you know, the projects that are occurring in all three of those utility funds right now. Each one of them has a significant project going on or will go on very shortly. And so, you know, missing out on that revenue. Although we can make things work, might not be the best financial approach. But I did want to make sure that the council knew that, of course, there's flexibility and implementation for any of our fees, but with this specific charge, because there's already other things going on in the development world, wanted to sort of highlight that. There might be a little more room for conversation if you guys wanted to have that.
Kind of, kind of keep in mind, we have changed the market situation by considerable. When we were talking about the parks SDCs, it's kind of a red hot roll and kind of a market and houses were being overbid by considerable. Nowadays, markets have really flattened out. You see houses on the market for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks without any offers at all. And so we are starting to see a slowdown and because of the interest rates and some other things, fear recession and all the rest. And that also leads me to think that there may be a more depression in the cost of housing prices and it's starting to affect the new prices as well. So supposedly you got a better deal today if you were to buy a brand new house, if you didn't mind spending percent or two more than you would have say back in August or something, but we're talking about fifteen hundred dollars or so here per house. So it's not exactly horrendous amount. Plus, I gotta be sensitive to the fact that we got a lot of bills to pay in the water wastewater world, so. Move on, charging.
Can you clarify that transportation per trip charge? Just what is, is that for like commercial?
Yeah, so we use the resident, residential fee for a normal, you know, single family home. That per trip cost would be, you know, a coffee shop as a per trip rep generated with that new development. So.
You guys just estimate like so many trips per day or?
There's a methodology to arrive at that that I'm not familiar with. I just know what
There's some number that goes along with it.
Cost is, but I think they estimate the average daily trips during the development process and we use that to determine what their SDC would be for instance.
Other sticker in here for a flag is obviously we don't see any stormwater trans system development charge in here. So you'll expect that here again and again. Not this time, but we need to do that.
Yep. So to your point, Councilor Exner, we don't currently charge an SDC for stormwater. That is something that is definitely on staff's mind, but at this point, just a navigating the other priorities and commitments with the other utility funds. So it's on our horizon. Jenny and I actually talked about that today on when we might be able to start a master plan process and work through that and a larger rate study for that fund, but not on our radar with, for the next year at least.
School meetings are coming up, right?
All right. And then last but not least, Sandy Net. So as you know, Sandy Net operates municipal fiber in town. We do have the relationship with Clackamas County CBX to provide some fiber service outside of city limits. But it's not for anyone. Those are very prescribed areas based on IG Clackamas County. Because there are several locations where city owned fiber passes potential service connections, for example, Bluff Road, Kelsa Road and Jarl Road. Greg and his team have proposed some sort of rural fiber rates to ensure that if we are passing some available homes, we have a rate code adopted into the fee schedule so we could actually connect someone. Right now, we don't have the ability to connect just anyone because there is no rate established for those customers. And I think, you know, the most realistic sort of example of this is we're currently going down Jarl Road for fiber treatment plant. There's a handful of properties there. If any of them should want to connect, we would have a rate code now established, but we could connect them and start, you know, getting a monthly revenue from those customers. We wouldn't be actively seeking connections. It would just be in areas where we already have fiber available. It's, you know, twenty feet to the front door, a hundred feet to the front door, it's easy access to Boraline, get connected and generate some pretty easy revenue.
But this is out, I mean, this is outside our, but we already got here, we're fired, but to be clear, this is a new rate.
Correct, it's just for those rural fiber customers. And those rates would match the propose, or the rates under the Clackamas County IGA that we have. So it wouldn't be, you know, just some new made up number. We're using sort of a a number that's already established within another IGA. We just wouldn't be passing any revenue to Clackamas County because it's not under the CBX program, we'd be keeping the whole thing.
Just to be clear, we're not paying to hook it up to the front door, that's CBX doing that?
No, we would still charge those customers a hundred dollar installation fee like we do for any other customer. This would be completely.
Wire in and everything?
This would be completely separate from anything with the.
Tell me if I'm wrong, the wire to clarify, the wire is already there though, thanks to the CBX project.
No, no, this doesn't have anything to do with CBX, this is outside the.
Oh, we're already there because of the wastewater.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So we already know three quarters of the people want the fiber, they already come out, hey, we want this, going down Bluff Road all the way down to Proctor, we ran fiber conduit in back then, we already own them back. Smarter just gaining more revenue off of what we put in five years ago. Because it's already there, yes.
But if somebody lives on Kelsa Road, running at the hundred to two hundred feet to the, from the road, all the way up to there, you're saying you do that for a hundred dollars?
We, Sandy Net has just a flat hundred dollar install fee. It's been that way. Councilor Pizza probably knows better than I.
We didn't have any fee before, for a long time, right?
Question though.
My question is, I don't believe that.
Because there's a difference between a residential neighborhood hookup, or at least we would assume and going down like my mom and dad's more rural gravel driveway
Sure.
to get to their house, right? That feels like a lot more of a project, like it seems like a very different scope. I hope I'm capturing.
Right, yeah, a hundred dollars.
So what I know of this guy is this, there's easy ones off the trunk line versus going down a half mile driveway. Yeah, there's that, there is that big difference, right?
Yeah, so.
This is based off of the easy hookups.
Yep, exactly. For those really complex hookups, even under our current model, there was, let's say, a business that, you know, has a particularly rocky access to their building and you're boring through stone versus just, you know, fresh dirt, that's going to have a different installation than your basic hundred dollar installation fee that's.
I just can't imagine doing anything that involves digging anything in the ground for a hundred dollars. When you have the equipment and the person and all that.
Sure.
As far as covering your costs.
Right, right.
It's a fantastic service. I support it all the way. I just want to make sure, like Carl said, that we accurately estimate what it truly costs to to provide that wonderful service.
Yeah, so as noted in the staff report too, you know, Sandy Net has every intention of working towards getting a master plan completed with that sort of a more financial analysis done with a rate study and things like that. So we might be able to have a better answer for that going forward, specifically on this Jarl Road. So we might be able to have a better answer for that going forward, specifically on this Jarl Road area. You know, none of those homes have water lines or natural gas lines in their front yard or sewer lines in their front yard like city homes do. So the, the boring is going to actually be easier than a residential home in Sandy would be because you don't have to do a bunch of locates and then accidentally cut, cut a irrigation line that wasn't, you know, known about. That's been an issue before. So there's, there's some hope that these, while the hundred dollars might not cover the entire cost of installation, they're going to be really easy installations to get to some of these homes. And with that, uh, pretty much recapped everything that was mentioned in the staff report. Ultimately, we're just trying to get some of these things cleaned up. So we either start charging a fee for easy services or recoup some of the costs that we are currently not recouping for some of the projects or, or processes that we have in place. Any questions?
Great, great report, Tyler. Thank you. It's good to public comment. I'll see if you have anything to follow up with. For public testimony, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. If this is official to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate that you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will receive three minutes to testify. And Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules do require that each person state their name and address for the record. I'm going to get more strict on. Call for any test, I'm now calling for any testimony on the proposal.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just look for any raised hands. Looking online. And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Hey, thank you. Tyler, do you have a recap recommendation?
No, Mayor. Oh, no recap recommendation. I would recommend that the council approve the modifications of the master fees and charges presented this evening.
All right. Well, for some further questions, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? I'll second. So motion by Council Smallwood and a second by Council Pete to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Open for discussion. I don't love it. If you can't love it, but you've done a great job and thank you for, you know, your explanation and the work that you put behind it. Really appreciate that. Unless there's further discussion, I can entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty eight.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number two thousand twenty two dash twenty eight.
Is there a second? A motion by Council Pete sold and a second by Council Exter to adopt resolution twenty two, twenty twenty two dash twenty eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right. Appreciate it. Great work. You were up. Water master plan acceptance. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, we're here tonight seeking acceptance of the twenty twenty two water master plan. This would be to allow the plan to move through the land use process to formally adopt as an addendum to the comprehensive plan. Council acceptance doesn't constitute any, there's no legal significance. However, it is used in documentation when we apply for loan and grant funding for the plan. So a little bit of background, cities in Oregon are required to develop a water sit master plan on a twenty year basis basis to meet Oregon administrative rules. We have received concurrence from the Oregon Health Authority on December first. The engineering consulting team of Consor, which is formerly Murray Smith, presented the draft water system master plan in a work session to council on December fifth. To solicit feedback and confirm findings and the water master plan has been finalized and is ready to move through the formal planning process. Staff recommends council move to accept the twenty twenty two water system master plan and authorize staff to formally enter into the planning process for legal adoption of the master plan. In terms of budgetary impacts, the water master plan includes a capital improvement program of a hundred and sixty six million dollars over the next twenty years. Capital construction will need to be debt financed with water rate revenue to provide for depth coverage. Anticipated funding sources include a mix of drinking water state revolving fund loans, business Oregon loans, grants, and either a WFI loan or bond financing.
Well, thank you for that. And this is a big project you took on right away, having done a tremendous amount of work for this. It's, it's a really good plan and thank you for the thoroughness of it. I appreciate it. Comments, questions? Motion.
I moved to accept the two thousand twenty two water master wastewater, water master plan. And authorize staff to begin the process to adopt the water master plan as the, as an addendum to the comprehensive plan.
There's a motion by Council Pete sold and a second by Council Sheldon to adopt the twenty twenty two water master plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Probably your most panelist presentation.
The reason for that, it's work sessions, lots of updates, lots of meetings. Thank you for that. Pleasant prep for council. All right, Jeremy, not Jeremy, Jeff, too many J's.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. So the next item on the agenda is the certified results of the November eighth, twenty twenty two general election. Session twenty seven of Sandy's charter states that the results of all elections shall be entered into the record of the proceedings of the council. So there's not an action for you to take, but we need to put these certified results into the packet and they're preserved for, for history. So just for the record, we received these certified results from Clackamas County on December sixth of this year. The results that everyone's aware of is Mayor Pulliam, Council Exter and Council Smallwood were reelected. Chris Maiten was elected to council seat number one. And Sandy's referral to prohibit suicide facilities was approved by the voters. So certificates of election have been delivered to the successful candidates. The Oregon Health Authority was notified of the results of our referral. And Ovis of Office will take place as the first agenda item on January third.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Jeff. And I just want to say, great work to you and staff, you know, especially with the suicide. And, you know, it's kind of a last second deal to really get that explanation and everything on council on, on the ballot. And, you know, it was a really well-run election and appreciate your work that you've done on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah.
All right, Jordan, you're up. Report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I wanted to bring up Chief Roberts to give an update on measure one fourteen. Council Sheldon had asked, I think at the last meeting for briefing on that. And so you and I had a conversation over the last few weeks about it. And obviously you've been reading the paper. You've seen there's been some actions lately and, and pausing implementation of the measure. So we wanted to kind of present where we're at with that or where the state's at with that, but also kind of the ramifications locally. And kind of what the ideas that we, we have are kind of tossing around as we think about what it means for Sandy and how we implement this measure if it's successful with the challenges. So Roberts.
Yeah, thank you, Jordan. Hope everybody's having a good evening. I have a list of things that I wanted to go through. Inform you kind of where we're at with this. This is started off with, and regardless of how, this, this is a really emotional ballot measure. For a lot of people, no matter what side you're on, right? So, but the fact is if this, this is, I think it was a fifty point seven percent margin that it.
Point seven margin.
So it was, it was very close, very, very tightly contested. And there is a, there's a lot of emotions that go along with this ballot measure. But aside from that, it's the will of the voters. And if this ends up getting you know, being, going into effect, then we, you know, Jordan and I had a conversation about what are we going to do and was our role in that? Because there's, there's a lot of things in this ballot measure. I'm not sure if all of you had a chance to read through it, but there's as a result of the language and there was a lot of questions for law enforcement agencies. We're designated as a quote permit agent, our Sandy Police Department is. And with that, there are certain responsibilities that, that we were going to have if this ballot measure goes into effect. And honestly, at first, we really had a hard time trying to figure out what those responsibilities were going to be. And we, as we've gotten further along, it started with a little bit of a shorter timeline with this effect. It was supposed to take effect December eighth. And there's some legal challenges. And I won't go through all of them as you're probably mostly aware of these with Harney County Circuit Court Judge Robert Rasio that put her order to restrain the tire ballot measure for some time. It looks like now that the earliest that this thing will take effect, if it does, is going to be in February. And we don't even know that. But we anticipate there may be more legal challenges as, as there's already, there's already more challenges filed. We don't know how this is going to turn out yet. So, but we do have at least until that time, which gives us a little bit more time to put in place a process for if this becomes effective, what's our role going to be? What are we going to be, need to do? And what's the impact going to be on our agency? We had a statewide call a couple, three weeks ago on this and we all got to ask our questions. You know, and, and voice our concerns. And those were sent to the DOJ, but we haven't got answers back on all those questions yet. This is how this thing is going so far. It's really confusing. So when Jordan and I were talking, you know, for, for us, we've always kind of gone above and beyond with some of our programs. At the, I feel at the police station as far as fingerprint services, registration services and things like that that we offer that a lot of places don't offer. Five days a week like we do. Well, we want to be able to do this. If this measure is implemented, we want to be able to, we want to be able to work this out for our citizens. If they want to get a permit, they can come here, get it in a timely fashion. But we know that there's going to be some impact on staffing. And how can we, and our budget as well? We don't know what that impact's going to be. I could foresee if this takes effect, that there could be a line outside our door for these. According to the ballot measure, the maximum we could charge for this permit project, the, the, the permit agent can only, the mag, the cap is sixty five dollars. So if you, you know, the fingerprinting, the staff time, it's well above that, obviously. So there's going to be some. And then there's a, there's the fact that we may not have enough front office staff to handle the fingerprinting and things like that. As of right now, there's also no electronic like. So some of these forms that we've started to develop with Oregon State Police, the permit form itself, we've actually got a form now. So things are moving. This form can't be electronically sent. And the fingerprints also can't be electronically sent. Now, will they get to a point? I, I'm sure that will happen, but for I can foresee quite some time that these are going to have to go through, you know, be mailed in. The fingerprint cards be mailed in or by courier. We can't electronically send them. So this is going to be create more of an expense time to do these things. So at this point in time, we're just trying to make sure that we're ready by February if this process takes place and the ballot measures in effect. There's a lot of work still yet to be done. We have some focus groups from Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. We have focus groups and work groups that are committed to working on this and we're, you know, we're on calls regularly to get updates. So I'm being updated all the time. But there's a lot of moving parts and, and a lot of those questions where we don't really know, have answers to, so we don't know the direction to go in. As of this time. I know that's confusing. It's a.
But I love your goal. I mean, your goal is, is to provide outstanding customer, you know, public service to our, you know, to our neighbors. And that should always be the goal. And I appreciate that.
Realize I could have teed that up a little bit better. We even talked about what measure four, one fourteen is. You know, prohibiting high capacity magazines. Requiring you know, a permit through local agencies. And then the other piece of this that adds another layer of bureaucracy, right, is completing safety training. And so some of the outstanding questions that we have, Chief and I agree on that goal and I think council probably does too, given that. You know, I think, I haven't actually looked at the precinct numbers, but respecting that, we do have community members that would probably want permitting service within our community. But if we were to take on the safety training, that's another level of getting certified for that safety training and providing that for anyone who wants. Who passes the background check to purchase again and they go through the permitting process and then get that safety training. There has been questions of can a third party provide that training, which, you know, I think we have a business in town that'd be.
We have had some businesses already contact us asking about that very thing. And the, the form that OSP had supplied us with, it, it it has a portion on it that requires the applicant to show us proof that they've completed that course. Which we haven't been told that we're not trying to have to put on this course, which nobody has yet. But it seems to me that it's heading in that direction that maybe some companies will be able to do this. And they bring that to us, which would really lessen the burden on us to, to not to have to provide that training that doesn't really exist yet. As far as there's some elements in there of some, either some dry fire, you know, some, some, you know, in-person training that we just don't have. Put in place yet. So.
I think, you know, what, the goal I think is correct, right? And I think we agree upon that in terms of our citizens here and even the greater Sandy community. One of our concerns though is that the rules around local agencies opting out, right? So, you know, we're, we're the metro area for a lot of East County, right? That can draw a lot of folks, given that we have a you know, some town, right? That's, that's popular and stuff that. And if Essequita doesn't have that, it's, you know, some, you know, East Smallomo County and stuff too. We could be drawing a lot of people to our, our police department because we'll endeavor to provide such a good service. And so you're talking about the lines and things like that could become a problem, especially if we're only getting sixty five dollars per permit, right? Now we're providing service for a lot of Clackamas County, because otherwise you may have to go to the county or go, you know, thirty minutes, an hour away to get your permit done. But just something that we're kind of aware of as we work.
Is, you know, people, there's a lot of interest in folks being able to get this process really flowing. Are, would our agency be able to receive outside funding and stuff to help, you know, help assist them? Because I have to assume that there are groups and organizations that would really like to see this.
Suggesting funding for unfunded banking.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I I know that we've received money from Sandy Backs the Blue, right? Other organizations to help with our processes within. I mean, could we, I mean, could Sandy Backs the Blue raise money that goes towards something like that? Potentially. Those are the things I'd be curious and finding.
Potentially, yes. I'm not really sure. We just haven't got that far into funding issues, but yeah, it is completely unfunded. And also the, is, what Jordan was talking about too was, so there is some language in the ballot measure that refers to a permit agent, say the chief of police or a municipal agency can refer things to the county. And I was just talking to Council Sheldon about this language in there that we, we don't have clarification on. And then it also says that the, the sheriff can refer folks to municipal agencies, so vice versa. So what we're thinking is this, I think what City Manager Wheeler was saying is these folks that live not necessarily in the city limits can be referred, but that's just a guess at this point. So we don't really know, but we think that's kind of what it's, what it's headed.
So in, I appreciate the thought that it might happen by February. Many of the lawyers and people I talk to say, never. So here, here's my question is us, in the meantime, whether it's February, end of next year, never. I understand there are long lines of people. I understand there are long lines of people trying to buy guns because of the possibility of having all these other constraints happening to them. How, how are we managing the current law, the legal system that now is in effect? Because one-one-four is no longer, or is not yet a legal, whatever you want to call it, device. Whatever, because of all the constraints, are we still continuing to pull people through with the background reports? Getting them their guns so they can buy as it should be? And, and there's, there are a lot of background, uh, backlines of that, or how, how are we managing current?
Yeah, so I, the answer is yes, they're still processing those during this time. And that was part of Judge Rasio's decision. So there is a backlog. I think the last number I heard last week was in between forty and fifty thousand. Quite the backlog. So those folks are being processed without, without the restrictions of, of the ballot measure one fourteen because they're on place yet. So it's like. If you wait for lack of a better term, the way it was before, they're, they're being processed in that manner. Well, this is being. So the answer is yes, there's a big backlog.
Isn't there, if you don't get it within three days, they have to go forward with it because they can't get the background report through?
How is that? Most, most dealers, they, they can do that, but are they doing that? They're, most are not doing. Uh, there, with, if you do that, you, you take on a certain liability. So you're not getting an answer from, you know. Firearms division and if you release, uh, and most owners know this, they, they can release it by law. But you take on certain liability, but that's the most.
So you talked about, uh, superior customer service and so on. If we end up having one-one-four in place. Um, I assume you were going to do the same thing until one-one-four, if it ever gets put in place. So responding to our gun shops. Uh, being able to move people through the fingerprinting and all that kind of stuff. We're still able to handle that or are we falling way behind on that as well?
Actually, we don't, we don't do it. So, so a, as of now, our role, this is what development one fourteen changes, uh. Pretty drastically is our role as a permit agent in development is we do have a role in folks. Our agency has a role in folks obtaining a permit by firearms. Before that was left to Oregon State Police and then also the, uh, if you're a registered gun dealer, then. Fingerprints and things of that nature were done there and the background checks we got by OSP. We didn't have a role.
Okay.
Now we will, if this ballot. So right now, we're not doing anything different on our end. We're just trying to prepare. If this ballot measure goes into effect, what can we do to prepare for it? And we're trying to get the answers to everything we need, so we're properly preparing.
So are we preparing like a? All right, I'll wait till after we're done.
Um, so two questions and I'll just kind of put them out, but, um. I do kind of want to just kind of clarify a little bit about what our liability would be if, once we take on the responsibility for doing this. And then second of all, can we limit our, um. Realm of responsibility for doing this to just city residents and require the county. To do their, you know, to do folks outside city limits so that we're not taking on the county's liability or responsibility. At, you know, at a loss at sixty-five bucks a piece when it's customers farm work.
Okay, so the first part, the liability is, I believe is high. The reason for that is some of the language in the ballot measure specifically states. That the result of. The chief of the sheriff, whichever jurisdiction you're in, has the final say on whether a person gets a permit from a agent. Not the state police. So in my mind, and I'm sure in yours too, and I was just, you know, I've had discussions with other law enforcement personnel about this. Is if we're the ones issuing the permit so they can go get. Go to the guns shop, the dealer and go ahead and get the, or give our permit to them. They still have another process to go through. But that permit can't get issued by anybody but say, you know, as of now in Sandy, the chief of police or the sheriff. So where does that responsibility lie? If you're making that decision yet, to me, that means that you're taking on some of that liability. Well, and of course there's processes that you'll go through to make sure they pass all the background checks and things of this nature, but that nature, but. You know, as a, as a city, you, you always think about those things. The second portion is kind of what we were, I was talking about earlier. I believe that that language refers to, you can have the choice to just issue these permits as a permit agent. By the folks that live within your city limits and you can refer the other ones to the county jurisdiction and vice versa. So they can, the county can say, oh, you live in Sandy City Limits, go to Sandy Police Department and get your permit. So I think that's where it's headed as far as that goes, but the liability issues are there.
But let me follow the type, but Tyler, sorry to bring you into this. But I mean, the police is underneath our city and county services. You know, contract and so while it's light building, we have a claim and all that kind of stuff. It would be covered under our. Permit, you know, and everything else in our police department, correct?
It should, yeah.
It should. Haven't seen anything that would indicate that CIS isn't providing coverage for any sort of liability.
I agree, it is a liability. You've done risk transfer, you know, where, where it's not like we're paying that out of our police budget.
Can I talk about one thing that I don't know is address? Yeah, and that is the denial challenged in court. I know that's significant for some of our law enforcement partners. It falls upon them. When, when you deny somebody, they have a right in court to challenge that and that's where that legal defense comes in. I don't know if that necessarily. Because it's not necessarily a lawsuit, but I, I, the question is, does that, will that financially fall upon us?
That'd be an interesting question. Without any doubt, there's increased staff time, not for the administration of the program at the counter level, but also. In your example there, court time.
That's the significant cost with the current concealed handgun license. Program. And so we're talking about not just denying somebody the right to conceal their, their firearm, but. The right to own that, purchase and own a firearm. So I think it's going to have a.
And what I would add and then I exit, um, is just that if we, if there was, um. You know, an opportunity where a Sandy officer may be going to court for that specific case, we probably have to retain an attorney from BEH. As our legal representation and we felt that we needed it, because CIS doesn't provide in that realm, an attorney on our behalf, so. On the liability side of things, the entity itself would be sued for malpractice or whatever the appropriate term is. We covered under CIS policy, I would likely assume, but if there was an individual claim that required court trial or anything like that, it would be. And where's your A and O picked up that you have to move your professionals, some of that stuff outside this time? Uh, we just moved workers comp to safe, otherwise everything else is still under the CIS umbrella.
And I do know that CIS and, you know, the folks at BH are, are involved in this, they're involved too, to keep track of all this. And we're having those conversations as well.
So I just, I, I don't know what Sandy's current policy is. Do, do officers purchase their own firearms? And the reason I'm asking that is, do we need to purchase a tranche of firearms to, for any potential recruits or anything that may come in?
We do not. So we, we provide that for them. If it used to not be that way, we changed our policy in light of some. Some, uh, you know, some current trends and, uh, you know, recommendations from our, from CIS do about having. Department issued one, so we've got enough of them. We issue those now as far as off duty. They are, that's their responsibility. So there's also a question of magazine capacities for those, because it doesn't really specify. So there, those, these are more issues that we're working out, because that's a, that's another thing being talked about is are some of our folks. When they're not on duty and, and if they're carrying a concealed firearm and they have that magazine that is capable of holding more than ten rounds. How's that going to work with a sworn officer? These are still, these are also the questions that are being asked, there's a lot of this, so.
We have enough for them to show up to work, do their job.
Yeah, yes, we do.
I was just going to say again, thanks, uh, for getting ahead of this, because it's not only. It doesn't only affect citizens, but you know, but local businesses that deal in this, there was some concern, you know, there's concern that they. Would maybe not have a business, so it's a, it's a big deal.
Thank you.
Um, but I'll start the, I'll start the chain of, uh, goodbyes to council. I know we'll have our own. You deserve some public recognition. Um, and I, I know everyone's going to have some words, but, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to Jeremy. Sixteen years and I only got four of those, but Jeff said he was the first supervisor I met. He might not remember this, but I think it was back in like maybe two thousand thirteen, fourteen, when he came to, uh, Lake Swigo. Presented to the city council about fiber, believe it or not. And, and that stands out in my mind, meeting Jeremy Pito there, uh, Lake Swigo. But it's hard to imagine a city council without Jeremy, um, pretty much a mainstay. I mean. Sixteen years, um, and personally coming on to, you know, fresh into a new community, a new city. Uh, Jeremy being a historian, as we all know, um, how helpful it was for me, uh, to learn from you. Getting the broader context of why things are and how they are done before and why everything is so important, so. Um, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to really miss you and I know you're going to be involved because you won't be able to resist. Really from the staff, um, all of us, we really appreciate all of your service.
That it?
Yeah.
Well, I know, I, I am, I have him, this is my last remark. You can't start there.
Two things, one is, is, um, I want to put my words out there too, Jeremy, for all the times we've had a chance to. Look across the dais here and be able to. Argue and, and agree. I appreciate all those many years. I haven't been on the, as long as you, but. I appreciate your words, your wisdom and the things that really made a difference in how I view this job, so. And then also on, when we were on planning commission, now you were the skilled guy there and I came on as a beginner and. So kind of got, um. Pitalized as I moved along. I guess that's when I called it that way. So I'm going to miss you on, on all these things that are happening here. For all to start crying. Uh, I want to just make a once quick comment that, uh, last time we met, um, I gave the. Hope group quite a bad time about all the things that they were trying to do and didn't seem to be doing it and. Quite frankly, uh, I think it was like a couple of hours after that meeting. I got several emails from April and all the other people that are part of that and my nephew is well down the road of finding a job and finding a house and. And getting some counseling. So if anybody's listening and, or if you decide you want to provide that reference. For the folks in Oregon City, I'd highly recommend them now. I'm, I'm impressed. Please. And I look forward to seeing my nephew moving through that process much faster than it would have been with myself. And then, um, other than there is no art committee statement to be made or in report, I'll pass on Merry Christmas.
But it's coming.
I'm looking forward to.
Um, I also wanted, uh, kind of wish Jeremy well and, uh, hi boys. Just whenever I was on that side of the lectern over there testifying, you were the one that was always very. Interested and helpful at trying to kind of find some common ground there. And then on this side of the, the dais, I. I think it's been really helpful to listen to your, um, rationale and you're again able to kind of. Find, um, where we have common ground and look for consensus and that's really, I really appreciate that. And most of all, I think your legacy that you're leaving, um, but also probably continuing to be involved in is, um. Making Sandy net a national, uh. Trophy for Sandy that, you know, you, that you, you started this, you and Scott started that and. It's nationally known, it's nationally recognized and I'm really proud of you, like I see, because we sure are proud of you.
It's been, uh, I, I'm not going to keep poking at you too much. Um, but it's been super cool working with you and getting to know you over the last couple of years. And get to chat a little bit. I'm going to, I, I don't know if Chris is a runner, but I'm going to miss the running.
I was actually just going to tell Chris.
Get out there and start running. But, uh, with all seriousness, you know, the, I don't know of anybody that, that is passionate about this. City as whole as you are, and it's really relevant and things like that and stuff, so. Um, I think you, and I think you're leaving an awesome legacy and I'm sure it's not going to be the last time I see your chat, so.
Is this just, are we just talking about Jeremy? Yeah, uh, it has been an honor. And Chris, you are going to have to start running. I, I don't know what else to say. But, uh, you know.
Well, you know, I am a crier. But I'm not going to speak too much because it'd be hard to go around. But I was running around the city and I was, um, thinking about. You know, what's been going on for the last twenty years almost, the, the planning and council and just. Ever thought of as a legacy, just, you know, at least a better place to live, work. I just myself, my kids, my friends. I've been with a lot of counselors, some mates, just to be blunt, they never showed up. There's, some of you may remember, Joe from one meeting and then initial performance, you know, what do you do with this? Um, sorry, you're out there listening to that and you just heard, we're calling you a flight. Sorry, but, uh, well, it's a lot of passion. We sit up here and it's good to have a full dais, uh, here, because people came. May disagree on things, but we're all passionate and we're all here because we want to make this the. I do a lot of things. To speak about sending it passionately, travel all over the country, speaking on that. Out of the White House, speaking at Congress, but I wouldn't have had it, not anything I wanted to do, um. But, uh, because of things we did here, and because not one person, but all of us in this staff. We couldn't do without. We have the best staffs. I got to see that when I was on C four. You've got to be part of the leadership of C four, just to see what goes on, just every time we come back to our city councils. And who we get to work with and now we make this a group and knowing we weren't masks. And it just that, right, like, um, respect, um, that we need to have for each other and our staffs. You know, uh. Being personable, just recommend that constantly just be personal. You know about mirroring, you know, why you forget it, for that, you know, I've been running around the city a long time. For twenty years thinking about this, right? Um, yeah, maybe for me, joking, but it's what keeps this light. Because it gets pretty. Talking sewage. Uh, we've had a lot of tough times, we've had some patientings and some of the things, um, my first kind of council. Those are rough, rough times. We've had to let people go as a council and be part of that, that's hard. Um, but we also have a lot of wins, uh, how we changed compensation studies. Yes, standing next. Being in this place, as I said, when we lit the park up next to your house, um, right there in the. Timberline park there, um. This is like turning on electricity. It's changed. People, I years from now are going to go, what was it like when you didn't have, you know, we're one of the first communities, not only interstate. More and more rolling into it and following what we were able to achieve. And that wasn't, that was just. Press roots, someone that knew had a background in something. I'll push, push that forward. Laugh a lot. Listen more. To learn. I needed to step back. I needed to step back. I found out a lot more than people might just listen. We got a lot accomplished. Yeah, Sandy Man and Fiber was, but maybe I'll be best, best in orbit, um, Sammy's style. Years before this, I always thought Sandy needed a, he called a style that needed something like eleven North Washington, not to be, but it's own thing. Years before I even have a council, just, I go eleven all the time. My, my uncle's actually the mayor. So we did three sixty second Bell Street. How that changed up. We did the debacle through, uh, changed our community. So those great things that keep doing that. Um, and then water we didn't see. I know we're talking about changing the water again, and how this would be, that might work. Talk about, you know, that town drying up if we did that, Tennessee is so. Yes, I'll miss this. In good hands. Haven't seen who asked me, but I know everyone says that when they leave. But you know, I think, uh, there's a few communities that have, you know, or ways up in and, um, those type of things. My family's excited because I started volunteering here before I was married. I joined playing for his marriage and I'm counsel before the kids were born. Times they always thought that this is where I worked. Well, all you know, it's a pain in the, but, but just that they saw your dad and Lisa as well volunteers, just the volunteer piece of that. So I recommend that to our community. Get involved. Does make a difference. You learn so much about how something works. My first time, I was, I had a letter in the mail. Making lots sizes smaller or something dumb street, you guys. I like, I want to have a bigger boss. I could sit there and complain or I could get. But yeah. Well, I can speak about each one of you. Did that once before last time. Of course, I tried to do the whole thing. It was on Zoom though, but, um, I, I'm just blessed to know.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go to you last, where I won't get through everything. You know, I always want to get through it all. Uh, first I went to the staff appreciation, um, holiday lunch, uh, with, uh, counselor, uh, Exner and, um, and Dawn, uh, was there and it was great. Um, it was just so great to see all our different departments represented there, smiles on everybody's faces. Uh, approached several times by different team members of the city about, um, how happy they were about the, the bonuses that kid they came, that came that the council had agreed on, uh, along with our, our, our leadership team. Uh, so just thank you for putting that on, uh, doing the tremendous job with that staff. Um, uh, rural fund of a hundred million. So that was announced. There was an agreement, uh, bipartisan agreement, the state legislature that they're putting together. A side fund of a hundred million dollars for rural communities. Uh, we've already been in touch with Nellie about it, uh, but that's exciting. Because when you think about kind of partisan makeup in the legislature, uh, it's kind of a little bit of some funds and stuff that may be a little easier to access with those rural legislators being the ones that kind of control, you know, where those funds are going to go. Uh, so I know that's what we're talking with representative P even, Senator Bottom about. Um, but recently, uh, we had our parks, uh, joint meeting. Uh, it was great. Thank you to our staff for Michelle for putting that on. That same night, I was able to go to our transit committee meeting, uh, uh, went there, uh, for a couple of reasons, but one of them was to celebrate the new line that we have connecting, uh, in the clack. Uh, which I think, uh, for, you know, you show up, uh, to that transit, uh, meeting and you talk about by its report, you know, that's really truly representative of folks that you're serving. Um, and folks that need the services in our community, what that's going to mean to people in our community to be able to access that and get to places like Clackamas is going to be tremendous. Uh, long time ago, thank you to Andy or Keem over at Transit, uh, for doing that. Um, uh, Parkway, and we had a huge event last night, uh, with our, our holiday lights. Tomorrow's the shortest day Parkway. Uh, my kids keep talking about it. What's that? It's, oh, it's Monday. Wednesday night, tomorrow's Jeremy's appreciation event tomorrow. Wednesday's the shortest day, uh, Parkway. Uh, I wanted to also say some remarks about our council. Uh, this is the last meeting of this council for the last two years. And if you think about our accomplishments that we've done collectively as a group, uh, they're pretty big. And they're particularly big when you think about our first meeting, you know, going in to the goal setting and the different things that we kind of really worked collectively as a group on to really make sure that we are going to be successful council. And as I list so many things, you're going to think back to how long these last three years have also been. We spearheaded, we did the COVID nineteen relief program for our small businesses. We did the outdoor cover structure program that we now see in a lot of our local restaurants and pubs around town. We broke dirt on the three sixty second Bell Street connection. That longtime pedestrian sidewalk from Vista Loop to Tenai. It's gone in.
It's done.
Done. It's done. Completed our transportation and transit master plans. We've launched our comprehensive plan for growth. Uh, and had, you know, all kinds of community outreach and visioning that's already taken part, you know, in that process. We have our economic development plan, uh, that's well, you know, on its way. Additionally, think about that the return of the, uh, movie and the music in the park and how great those have been. The improvements in our parks and recreation departments and our other departments, talking about just our team and the lunch, the new staff members and the apartment heads and the leadership that's come on to our community over the last two years. Sandy Matt, Sandy Transit expansion that I just talked about. Uh, think about the library and how they stepped up during COVID and with their side, the sidewalk, uh, library checkout that they did and the holiday tree lighting where we had the drive-through display and the different things that they did to really think outside the box. You know, during, during the holiday season. Uh, we have a police department here in the state of Oregon. Here in Sandy that is fully funded, that is fully staffed and has an agreed contract, uh, in place. Uh, with a tremendous leadership team over there at our police department. Uh, thank you for all your work that you guys do. Uh, think about the success of the homelessness task force over the last two years where we have, you know, the derelict RV, program, you know, in place. We have, uh, overnight, you know, sleeping and camping ordinances with time, place, matter, you know, taken care of. The, uh, um, we have an upcoming, it's still, it's not presented yet, but we have an upcoming presentation coming from the Sandy Community Campus Committee and the hard work that's been going on over that project over the last two years. And then of course, I listed here just that the staff improvements and stuff that I already mentioned. Um, just, it's been a huge, uh, two years. We have a lot left to accomplish. I apologize if there's things that we've accomplished that you might be on your top of mind right now, uh, that I didn't get to without thinking that through. Uh, but that is, I listed committees, staff work, we're meeting in these meetings, outside of these meetings. Uh, everybody in this room and beyond, um, is really the reason for those accomplishments. And just thank you for everybody, for all of your work that you did. You've really done a lot for the community of Sandy for the last couple of years. So, thank you. All right, Jeremy. Uh, so you know, I, I'm saving most of my remarks for, you know, tomorrow for the event, but you know, um, my, my first interaction with you, you did cry. It was, uh, during the big Sandy Mountain Festival parade thing, you know, and, uh, came in here, uh, we weren't going to have a parade that year and, and we really were fight back down the parade and get funding problems and you know, you got pretty emotional, thinking about not having the parade and what it meant to you. And that was kind of the first night and I remembered it and we reconnected later that we connected that we were both kids that went to Catral, grew up in the community and, you know, we have kids that are the same age. Uh, and then after joining council and becoming mayor, you know, we went through a lot, especially that first year of the closing, you know, the pool, the things, um. My mind can always go pretty political and strategic, you know? But you're always somebody that served as my conscience. Uh, that continually reminded me that this, uh, you know, Stan, this is our community, you know, it's where we live. So I just, uh, you know, there's, we all are even fighting, have different opinions, but there's only truly, especially in recent history, just a handful of individuals, you know, that really made the community of Sandy, you know what it is, you know, today. You know, quite honestly, one of them sits to my left, you know, Kathleen and Mike, uh, Walker, you have, you have Linda Malone. You know, you have Nancy Eber, you know, you have Julie Stevens. You have Scott Lazzini. And you got Jeremy Beatle. You know, who is just a titan in this community would be on any Mount Rushmore that you would put, you know, for this incredible, you know, community of seeing. And, you know, we are all here in your debt. Our neighbors are, you know, our kids are, the people that live here. And, um, and very important foundational things of this community. I mean, things that in the middle of crisis in a pandemic, uh, just you can get heightened even more, you know, with our children's access to the internet and the work from home and everything. Rural communities were suffering over the last two years, not Sandy. And we did another reason, not, not because of our access to the internet and other things that you worked tremendously hard, uh, to put into place. So I'll have more remarks today tomorrow. I'm sure there'll be more tiers, uh, tomorrow, uh, but really wanted to just, uh, thank you for your, your work over the last sixteen years. And I know you have continued work and I know, uh, you're going to watch us, you're going to pay attention. And I told you this when we had, uh, breakfast, I just, I can't imagine an individual, when we're all gathered up here, that would, at a time of their choosing, decide to walk through those doors and stand up at this podium and address this council that wouldn't have a larger impact and have this council sitting at the, you know, tips of their seats and wanting to hear what the subdivision has to say. And I hope you do take us, uh, take it, you know, take us up on that, uh, even, even if it's just for us to ride that, you know? Uh, you're somebody that we definitely.
We got to run up here to do it.
That's right. So thank you that we do have a parting gift, uh, for here tonight that we wanted to give to you. Didn't know how to do like a lightning fiber spark. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, oh.
I, I, I want to go back. I'm sorry. I forgot to say, uh, the Kiwanis Christmas gift basket community event thing. Yeah, two hundred and twenty-five families were fed, five hundred and, I don't know, about fifty kids got Christmas presents and we ran out of presents and we had to go shop for more presents and stuff. It's the, you know, uh, the Sandy Fire folks, it's the Helping Hands. It's of course, the Kiwanis and Martin and Shannon Montgomery, but a whole bunch of volunteers, Mayor was there. Huge benefit that really helps feed our community and, uh, gives them something to smile about come Christmas. So really appreciate the community involvement and it was a great event.
Thank you. Appreciate that all. Thank you, everybody.